Welcome to everybody and thanks for coming to a session on the top rate of taxation, the kind of one of the many key issues in the forthcoming general election. We've got a great lineup of four papers. So each speaker is going to speak for 20 minutes and then we'll have some time at the end for general questioning from the audience. So my name's John Van Noren, by the way. This is a Centennial Performance sponsored session. So the first paper is going to be a joint paper by James Brown and David Phillips from the Institute of Fiscal Studies. It's actually David's birthday today, 30th birthday, so we should sing him happy birthday if we want to. But in fact, James Brown is going to be actually doing the presentation. So James, you have 20 minutes, over to you.
So thanks, John. I'll just get my slides up. So as you probably know, there's been several changes to the taxation of very high incomes in the UK over the last few years. But for those who are unfamiliar, I'll describe the policy environment and then show what happened following an increase in the top tax rate in 2010-11. So in the UK, the top rate of income tax was cut during the 1980s, and that was really the start of an international trend away from very high top tax rates in developed countries. So in the UK, we reduced our top tax rate from 83% to 40% for earned income. It went right the way up to 98% for unearned income before 1979. And those changes represented a reduction in the marginal income tax rate faced by the top 1% of adults, but not for slightly lower income groups. And at the same time as these things happened, top income shares increased, particularly for the top 1% who were affected by the tax cuts. So that's the purple dotted line up there. But also, but to a lesser extent, for the next richest 4%, who didn't see a tax cut. So there were two big tax cuts for the top 1% in this period, in 1979, when the top rate was reduced to 60%, and then again to 40% in 1988. But in neither case did that lead to an immediate increase in the top 1% share. Rather, the top 1% share of income increased gradually over the whole period. So it's not necessarily clear that the top income shares were the result of changes in tax policy, or whether other government policies that were being introduced at the same time, or wider trends. So if you were here yesterday and heard Philippe Agion speak, he was saying that innovation, more opportunities for innovation, lead to higher shares for the top 1%. If you think there were more of these opportunities for innovation during this period, that might explain some of the increase in the top 1% share, but wouldn't necessarily affect the share of the next richest 4%. But if you do buy the common trends assumption, using that next richest 4% as a comparison group, you can do a difference in difference on the data I showed you on the last slide, effectively. That's what a paper as part of the Merly's Review that we had at the IFS a few years ago did. They used that to estimate a taxable income elasticity of 0.46. And if that's true, it implies that increasing the marginal income tax rate back up to 50% as happened in 2010-11 would take you over the top of the Laffer curve. After those two big tax rate cuts during the 1980s, during the 1990s and 2000s, the marginal income tax rate faced by the richest 1% remained at 40% until 2010, when a new rate affecting approximately the top two-thirds of 1% of adults was introduced. In contrast to the changes that happened during the 1980s, this change was pre-announced, giving individuals the opportunity to bring their income forward by a year before the tax rate was introduced, in order to avoid having to pay the higher tax rate on some of their income. Another change that affected taxation of top incomes in this period was the withdrawal of the tax-free allowance from those with incomes above £100,000. So that's affecting roughly the richest 1.5% of adults. And that creates a slightly strange 60% band of income where the marginal income tax rate is 60% compared to 40% either side. Now, I'll show you what actually happened following the 2010 changes in a moment, but it's worth noting, partly as a result of what I'm about to show you, that the 50% rate didn't last for very long. It was cut to 45%, so still above where it was before the reform three years later. So this just shows you the changes to the taxation of top incomes that happened in 2010-11. So you've got this slightly strange band where the marginal tax rate's 60%, and then this new 50% income tax rate for the very top incomes. So how, there's various different ways in which people could respond to these higher tax rates. One thing we'd expect from economic theory is that individuals would bunch at these new convex kink points that have been introduced in the tax system. But actually, as is quite often found in the literature looking at this area, we observe relatively little bunching at these new kink points at 100,000 and 150,000. So you can see a little bit there and there, but really not very much. You know, I've got another paper that looks at the bunching at these kink points, and you can use various methodologies to estimate elasticities off the bunching at these kink points, but they're all very low. And in fact, we observe less bunching at these two new tax thresholds than we observed at a longstanding threshold in the income tax system, where the 40% higher income tax rate kicks in. So that's the tax rate that affects roughly the richest 10% of adults. So in this other paper that I've got, we show that virtually all of the bunching at all of these kink points is explained, is accounted for by directors of closely-held incorporated businesses. So these are people who are able to change the timing of their dividend payments such that they, their incomes are always precisely targeted on these points in the tax system. They can easily shift the timing of their taxable income from year to year to take advantage of the tax system in the way that other groups can't or would find somewhat more costly to do. Looking at wider responses, we can look at aggregate figures, and these reveal significant income shifting to 2009, the year before the higher tax rate was introduced, from future years. So this chart shows you the trends in the total amount of income of the affected group, those with incomes above £150,000, compared with a group of individuals with a slightly lower income. And you can see that the trends in the incomes of these two groups track each other pretty closely throughout this period, but we do see some divergences. So during the dot-com boom at the end of the 1990s, the incomes of the very richest grow more quickly, then they grow less quickly when the dot-com bubble burst in the early 2000s. They then grew more quickly again pre-crisis, but then fell back in 2008 as a result of the stock market crash that happened in that year. So then we come to 2009, where, so this is the year before, the top tax rate was increased. We can see that the group with slightly lower incomes saw their incomes fall during that year, and those with the very highest incomes, you see a big increase in their income. That's the result of income shifting, and then you see their income falls quite substantially in the first year of the higher tax rate. So we've seen there's a lot of this income shifting from later years to 2009-10, not necessarily just the first year of the higher tax rate, but it's also, you know, it's not just a timing response. There's a study done by HMRC, the UK Tax Authority, in 2012, looking at the very early responses based on the first year of tax returns with the higher tax rate. And they used, you know, they effectively used the data on the previous slide or similar data to do a difference in difference approach, again, comparing the trends of those two groups. But they also try and correct for this income shifting by looking at how much of the income that was brought forward to 2009-10 was from 2010-11, and how much was from later years. And they do that by looking at the trends in incomes among those whose incomes in the previous years were relatively stable. So this just shows that graphically. They work out this counterfactual income based on the difference in difference approach, also with stock market growth as another right-hand side variable. We saw that that explained higher, when stocks go up, the incomes of the top 1% increase more quickly. So they use that to estimate the amount of income that was brought forward to 2009-10 from future years. They then work out how much of that forestalling, that income shifting from later years to 2009-10 was from 2010-11, and how much was the result of other behavioral responses to the higher tax rate. And, you know, once they do that, they estimate a taxable income elasticity of 0.48 using this methodology. That's very similar to the figure from the previous work, looking at tax changes during the 1980s. And once you make that assumption, that suggests that a 50% rate does raise more than a 40% rate in the long run, once you've got rid of this income shifting around the time that it was introduced. But reducing the rate to 45% would only reduce revenues by about 0.1 billion a year. But of course, there's still a lot of uncertainty around these numbers, both those of the HMRC study in 2012 and the study from the 1980s. And it's particularly around exactly how much of that forestalling we saw in 2009-10 was income being brought forward from 2010 rather than from future years. So what's changed since HMRC did that study a couple of years ago? So they based their results on tax returns that were filed on time in 2010-11. We, since then, we've got more complete data for 2010-11, and also data for another year, 2011-12. So when you look at the full data for 2010-11, that shows that income fell by more in 2010-11 than was previously suggested, particularly for the group with slightly lower income. So that suggests that perhaps the incomes of the very richest group would have fallen anyway, and so lesser the fall that we saw in 2010-11 was the result of the tax change. However, on the other hand, the data for 2011-12 doesn't show the big bounce back that you'd expect if quite a lot of the income that was brought forward to 2009 was from the first year. And so that would suggest that somewhat more of the reduction in income that we saw in 2010 was a permanent response to the change. So this just adds in that extra year of data. So you don't get the bounce back in 2011-12 that you might have expected if a lot of the income that was brought forward to 2009-10 was from that first year in 2010-11. So which forms of income were most responsive to the tax change? So again, we, as, when we look at the bunching at the new tax thresholds, we see clear evidence of a timing response with respect to dividend income. That's the easiest type of income to shift between periods, particularly if you've got a closely-held company. And there was some bounce back in 2011-12, but, you know, it's still some way below its pre-reform level. So perhaps one of the things that's going on here is that people were expecting the reduction in the tax rate that was announced towards the end of that 2011-12 tax year, and were sort of delaying receiving their income until the tax rate was reduced. On the other hand, employment income doesn't seem anywhere near as responsive to the changes in tax rates. So a lot of the previous literature has found that deductions from taxable income, so things like, in the UK, this is things like pension contributions, charitable donations, are particularly responsive to changes in the tax rate. Now, what we find is somewhat different to that, is quite surprising. We actually don't find the deductions that are observable on the tax return increase very much when you have the increase in the tax rate in 2010. A possible explanation for that is that it's the effect of reducing the maximum amount that people can put into their private pensions each year. That was a change that was introduced at roughly the same time as the tax rate was increased. On the other hand, I don't want to overstress this point, because we don't see all the deductions from taxable income in our tax return data in particular. For most employees whose pension is organized by their employers, we don't see the total amount of pension, we don't see any of their pension contributions. So this just shows that, shows what we had before, and we're seeing that the deductions don't increase in 2010-11 as we might have expected from the previous literature. So just to sum up, the UK introduced a 50% income tax rate on incomes above £150,000 in 2010, affecting somewhat less than 1% of all adults. And this was a short-lived experiment. The rate was reduced to 45% three years later. We don't see much bunching at the new kink points that were introduced in 2010-11, though this might increase as awareness of the optimal response to kink point increases. We saw that there was much more bunching at longer-established kink points in the tax system. There was clear evidence of timing effects for income, particularly for dividend income, with employment income being much less affected. But this isn't the whole story. Incomes didn't bounce back in 2011-12 in the way we might have expected, suggesting that a relatively large proportion of the drop in incomes we saw in 2010-11 was a permanent response to the higher tax rate. The key challenge for us in our ongoing research, looking at the size of the response to these tax changes, is to disentangle this timing response from a permanent response to incomes that we'll be looking at as part of our ongoing work in this area. So thank you very much.
So the next speaker is Henrik Kleben, who's going to share with us the Danish experience of top tax rates. We're a very international section.
Okay, so thanks to Alan and John for organizing this session and for inviting me to present. So indeed, I've been asked to give the Danish perspective, so that's what I'm going to do. And while doing that, I'm going to sort of throughout compare the Danish experiences and evidence with the evidence from other countries. So, just want to be able to see my slides here. Okay, I'm going to stand over here. Okay, so I want to start out with kind of a high-level question that I've been thinking a little bit about recently and that I find very fascinating, which is, how can Scandinavians tax so much? Or more precisely, how can we tax so much in Scandinavia and get away with it? So despite high taxes in Scandinavia, the countries there tend to perform very well on pretty much any economic outcome that we look at. And so the question is, how do they do that? And broadly speaking, I think people tend to take two views on this question. One is that it means that high taxes are really not that bad after all, or at least high taxes can be signed in such a way that they're not that bad. That's one view. The other view is that high taxes are really bad in general, but somehow Scandinavian countries are different. There are other things that are different about Scandinavian countries that offset the negative effects of tax rates. So today I'm going to focus mostly on the first view up there, that is, that high taxes don't have to be that bad, that is, that tax elasticities can be made relatively small via clever policy design. So in the 20 minutes I have here today, I'm obviously not going to be able to discuss all the issues surrounding that in detail, but just focus on a few things that I think is particularly relevant to the discussion here. Okay, so first what I'm going to, first what I think is quite useful and already pretty illuminating in terms of thinking about, for example, the UK versus Denmark, is to just look at some basic numbers here. So this table gives you some facts about taxes. So first of all, unsurprisingly, the tax take in Scandinavian countries is much bigger than in the UK and in the US. So for example, in Denmark, the tax take is 48%, the highest number anywhere in the world. And by comparison in the UK, the tax take is only 35%. So a first question is just how, sort of, you know, from a sort of a mechanical perspective, how do we collect that much more tax in Denmark than you do in the UK? And already there, it's quite illuminating, I think, to look at income tax rates. So at the bottom of the table here, I'm showing the, well, first I'm showing the, let's see this, that, okay, no, laser. So I'm showing the top marginal tax rate across different countries. So really, the thing to, the main thing to, so I should say that these top marginal tax rates, first of all, they're from 2010. So for the UK, they don't have the reduction in the 50p rate to 45p. And the other thing to note about them is that they're totally effective marginal tax rates at the top, including everything that creates a wedge between costs to the employer and the consumption of the worker, that is, income taxes, payroll and social security taxes, as well as the VAT. And so I think the main thing to note about these numbers is that top marginal tax rates are not that different across countries. They're not drastically different. So in the UK, it's 62.7%, and in the different Scandinavian countries, it varies between 60 and 70%. The US is significantly lower, but that's the, kind of, the only outlier up there. The other countries have roughly similar top marginal tax rates. Where differences are much more dramatic is when you look at what I've labeled the participation tax rate up there, which is the total average tax rate on labor force participation, again, including all the relevant factors, income taxes, payroll taxes, social security taxes, consumption taxes, and also means-tested transfers, which are important in terms of creating a tax wedge on labor force participation. Their differences are much, much darker. That tax rate is 55% in the UK and an astonishing 87% in Denmark. And amazingly, despite that high participation tax rate, Denmark has a very high labor force participation rate, especially for women, and it's quite a lot bigger than in the UK. And so a fascinating question is, is how that's possible? And that's something I'm thinking about, a little bit about these days in different projects, but it's a different topic from the one we're focusing on here today. Okay, so the conclusion of this is, the marginal tax rate is actually not at the top, it's not drastically different across countries. So the question is, what are the larger policy differences that are driving, that are partly driving differences in tax take? And there are three key differences here, I think, that are much bigger. One is the threshold, that is, where does the top marginal tax rate kick in? So in the UK, that's above £150,000, which is well within the top 1% of taxpayers. In Denmark, that threshold is 459,000 Danish kroner, corresponding roughly to £45,000. And that implies that the top 27% of taxpayers in Denmark are paying the top tax rate. So that's a big difference. The second difference is the broadness of the base. So in Denmark, there's been a consistent effort over decades in terms of trying to make that base as broad as possible and to limit, to the extent possible, avoidance opportunities. And so this is essentially something that's done by limiting available deductions, credits, exemptions, shifting possibilities and so on, the possibility of offshore, moving income offshore and so on. So that's another difference, I think, where Scandinavian countries are outliers. And then the final difference for top taxpayers is, of course, that the average tax rate, so the top marginal tax is not so much higher, but the average tax rate is a lot higher. The average tax rate reflects the whole tax rate schedule. So what's different in Denmark is not so much that the top marginal tax rate is higher, but that the tax rate is high all the way through the schedule. So redistribution in Scandinavia happens to a lesser degree through a progressive rate schedule, but by having very high tax rates overall, that that funds generous transfers that are means-tested. Okay, so these are three key differences. So I think when discussing the top tax rate, we really want to broaden that debate to include the threshold, where the threshold should be, and what the tax base should be, and in particular, how to limit avoidance channels. Now, these two dimensions, the threshold and the base, interact in important ways with the effect of the marginal tax rate, the effect of the tax rate on revenue. So in general, when we raise tax rates, that's going to have two effects on revenue. There's going to be a mechanical effect, because taking behavior is given. When we raise tax rates, we're going to collect more revenue. And then there's going to be a behavioral effect, because behavior is not given, taxpayers will do things to try and avoid paying higher tax rates. And both the mechanical and the behavioral effects interact in important ways with the base and the threshold. So basically, if you have a broader base, you're going to have a larger mechanical, positive mechanical effect of raising tax rates, and at the same time, you're going to limit shifting, which creates a smaller behavioral revenue loss from raising tax rates. So change in the base, for example, change in the threshold, is going to change the mechanical and behavioral revenue effects at the same time in desirable ways in terms of revenue collection. So, as you all know, and as we heard about in the last talk, a sufficient statistic for the second revenue effect, the behavioral revenue effect, is of course the elasticity of taxable income with respect to the marginal tax rate, or with respect to 1 minus the marginal tax rate, is how we normally measure that. And there's an enormous literature on that, and what I want to do now is just to contrast the evidence that we have from the US, that many of you will probably have seen before, with evidence from Denmark, and talk about why it's different, or maybe why it's, at the end of the day, when we really look at it, is quite similar. So here's a graph that many of you will probably have seen before, maybe you haven't seen this exact graph, but you've seen a version of this graph probably before. So it shows over time in the US, the evolution of the top 1% income share. That's the black squared graph. And at the same time, the top marginal tax rate, that is, the top 1% marginal tax rate in the graph with triangles. So as is well-known, there is this secular rise in top 1% income shares. We've all seen that in many times before at this point. But what I want to particularly focus on here is what goes on right here between 1986 and 1988, because it's really quite striking. So this, of course, 86 to 88 precisely coincides with the 1986 tax reform in the US. So there's been a ton of work on the 86 reform in the US. So there's been a ton of work on the 86 reform in the US. It's now kind of an ancient reform, but it still provides a really good example. I think the whole, you know, here's an unfalsifiable conjecture. The whole literature on the elasticity of taxable income, now a mainstay in public economics, but non-existent back in the 80s, might not have happened, or certainly wouldn't have been as influential as it ended up becoming if not for the 86 reform. It was really the enormous effects on taxable income that people found for the 86 reform that breathed life into the early literature. And I think had we understood from the beginning exactly what was driving those effects, maybe the literature wouldn't have gained the momentum that it ended up having. And I think when we finally found out what was driving the effects, it was too late to stop it, the literature, that is. But anyway, what really drove that literature is the pattern you see there, is that there's an enormous jump up in the top income share between 86 and 88. Basically, the top income share jumps from about 9% to almost 14%, just in those two years, coinciding precisely with this drop, the sharp drop in marginal tax rate. In terms of how much the top income share has been increasing over time, that's actually a pretty big proportion there, which seems to be driven by the 86 reform. Now, you can estimate elasticity of taxable income in a very simple way, based on this change in top income shares, and when you do that, you find a really large elasticity of about 1.4. That's obviously a huge elasticity that has potentially important implications, depending on what's driving it. And really, what a lot of the subsequent literature tried to do was to find out exactly what's driving that elasticity of something like 1.4, 1.5, or something like that. And I think through that literature, we now pretty much understand exactly what drives this estimate. It's basically driven by four things. One of it, but far from all of it, was the basic estimate that I've just talked about, where you just bag it up from top income shares, is biased by trending inequality. So inequality was already increasing prior to the 86 reform, and we just sort of do a simple diff-in-diff just around the reform. We are basically attributing all of the increase in top income shares to the change in tax rates, but some of it would, of course, have happened anyway because of trending inequality. That can explain some of the fact, maybe about one-third of the effect. The second one was shifting from corporate to personal income tax basis because the personal income tax rate went down, the corporate income tax rate was held constant over the course of this reform. That's about another third of the effect. And then there are two more effects. One was a pretty drastic increase in partnership income in the US due to the closing of lost, partnership lost tax shelters. And finally, there was a short-term timing effect due to the fact that the reform was anticipated. And those two effects together can explain just about the rest of, you know, the remaining one-third. So when we take all of these four effects together, then there's nothing left. In other words, all of these estimates, apart from some bias from inequality that we can try and control for, were driven by tax avoidance. Okay, so now, keeping this in mind, we can look at the Danish evidence. So again, going to a reform which is kind of ancient, but it's interesting because it happened pretty much at the same time as the US reform. So in 1987, there was a very big reform in Denmark. It shared some features with the 86 reform in the US, but was also different in other ways. It was a very large reform like the 86 reform in the US. And so this reform increased tax rates on some taxpayers, it reduced it on others. And this graph here is a simple difference in differences style diagram that's comparing the evolution over time around the implementation of the reform for taxpayers experiencing tax cuts as a result of reform to taxpayers experiencing tax increases. And what this reform shows pretty clearly is that immediately coinciding with the reform, those receiving tax cuts increased their taxable income relative to other taxpayers. So there's a pretty clear effect of those tax cuts there, and it builds up over time. Takes about three to four years for the full effect of the reform to materialize. Now, so that's a graphically very clear effect, but what's important to keep in mind, that it's also driven by various, very large underlying changes in incentives. So when you take that and translate it into an elasticity, you actually get a pretty modest number. So as you see here, there's a difference in differences elasticity up there. As you say, that this particular graph focuses on taxable income from labor. And you can do it from the different sources of taxable income, obviously. So the taxable labor income elasticity here is about 0.2. If you do that for capital, you get a slightly higher elasticity of between 0.25 and 0.3. If you look at overall taxable income, that gives an elasticity of about 0.2, pretty close to the taxable labor income elasticity for the simple reason that, in practice, almost all personal income is labor income, but that's by far the big bulk of personal taxable income. Okay, so these elasticities are already pretty modest, but they're actually quite high in the Danish context. It's facts, it's the biggest elasticities that I think we've ever found in Denmark for any reform. So if you look at all the reforms that has happened over the past 30 years, they all produce smaller elasticities than this one, typically around 0.1, 0.05, 0.12, things like this. So really, really small, really small elasticities. So the question is, why are the Danish elasticities so small compared to the US elasticities? And there, again, I think we understand the reasons. One is that in Denmark, there is no bias from trending inequality for the simple reason that income inequality in Denmark has been completely stable over the past three or four decades, unlike many other countries. And the other reason is that avoidance opportunities are much smaller in Denmark precisely because of all the brace-broadening activities that's been going on. So these elasticities are much less affected by shifting and deductions and things like that. That general point is consistent with the fact that, I'm saying, you know, as I have up there on the slide, that the elasticities have been falling over time in Denmark, and that's correlated, interestingly, that's correlated with the fact that the base have been broadened over time in Denmark. It's not necessarily causal, but I think it's highly suggestive that brace-broadening is associated with lower elasticities. So while sort of prima facie, the elasticities in Denmark seem very different from the US. Once we look into the anatomy of what's going on, I think actually the evidence is incredibly In the US, there are large elasticities driven by avoidance and some bias from inequality. And once we take that out, there's almost nothing left. In Denmark, there is no bias from trending inequality, and avoidance opportunities are already low, and so there we find elasticities close to zero. So I think not too inconsistent. Okay, so the final thing I wanna talk about is migration, which is something, a topic which is being discussed in this country quite frequently. So all of the responses that I've shown you so far are essentially intensive margin responses conditioned on staying in the country. So, and I've basically been arguing that when we look at that, it's mostly about avoidance. In other words, there aren't a lot of real response in those intensive marginal elasticities. But the one real response that could be there is that people could leave the country and go to a country with smaller tax rates. So we've looked at that in a paper with the next speaker, Camille Lande, and Emmanuel Sais and Espen Schulz. So in that paper, we focused on a specific foreigners' tax scheme in Denmark. So a preferential tax scheme for high-income foreigners that was enacted in Denmark in 1992. So basically, that tax, what that scheme did was that it cut the average tax rate on foreigners, which prior to this scheme was about 55% or so, to a flat rate of 30% for a duration of three years. And so what we look at here is the effect of that reform on the number of high-income foreigners in Denmark, basically comparing high-income eligible foreigners in the black squares. So these are foreigners that are basically within the top percentile of the Danish income distribution to low, and we compare those to lower-income ineligible foreigners. And as you can see, there's a very, there's a very clear effect of this scheme on migration. So essentially, this graph suggests that the reform about, just about, in fact, a bit more than doubled the number of high-income, the number of foreigners in, high-income foreigners in Denmark, the number of foreigners in the top 1% of the distribution. And that translates into really large migration elasticities of around, between 1.5 and 2. So pretty large, so pretty large elasticities. So that would seem to suggest that this migration response is potentially a big concern that we should worry about, but I now want to, I mean, I obviously think this is very interesting evidence, but I now wanna downplay its policy relevance a little bit, and especially for the UK perhaps. So the migration elasticities that we find are really large, but there are a couple of important points in terms of how we should interpret those elasticities. So first of all, it's important to note that these are migration elasticities for highly-paid foreigners. They're not migration elasticities for Danish natives. We can actually, and we try in the paper, to estimate the elasticity for Danish natives. We can do that because the scheme applied not only to foreigners, but also to Danish expatriates who wanted to come home. So using that, we try and estimate the elasticity for Danish natives, and there we find that the elasticity is actually very, very small. In other words, what we're finding here is that higher taxes discourage foreigners, may discourage foreigners from coming or staying in the countries, but they do not encourage Danish natives to leave. And that's a very important point for public finances, because of course, the bulk of revenue is still generated, it comes from natives, not from foreigners. My very final point, I'm gonna just spend 20 seconds on it because I'm out of time, is that even those high elasticities for foreigners in Denmark are likely to be much, much lower in a country like the UK, and that's because elasticities of that type really depends on the initial base. And so the large Danish elasticity is partly driven by the fact that we started from a very small initial base of high-income foreigners, whereas in the UK, one would start from a much larger initial base of highly-paid foreigners, and that, other things equal, will make the migration elasticity smaller. Thank you.
So Camille, you're next, Camille Lande, who's gonna share with us the French experience. As I'm sure you all know, Thomas Piketty has been arguing for much higher tax rates in France than elsewhere at the top.
Okay, well, thanks a lot for this very interesting debate. I'm gonna talk about the French experience, because some of you may know, yeah, there's a little bit of action there. Well, actually, there hasn't been that much action, you're gonna see, a lot of talking, but not that much action. But I'd like to start with reminding you a little bit about the timeline here. So the way it all started, it very much came as a surprise in February 2012. François Hollande suddenly announces that he will set up a 75% marginal tax rate on income above 1 million if elected. It came so much as a surprise that the same night, the man who would become his Ministry of Finance was on another TV show, and suddenly one of the journalists says, oh, you know, François Hollande just announced that the top tax rate is gonna be 75%, and the guy just laughs, he's like, yeah, yeah, good joke. So it very much came as a surprise, and you are gonna see that actually it was also very much unprepared. So just after being elected, the parliament meets and tries to set up that new tax, and there's a lot of debate. And in December 2012, Gérard Paudier decides to leave for Russia. This is one of these moments that define a nation, and this was a massive loss for France. If it weren't enough of a blow, the same month, the Supreme Court just says that the tax that had just been voted was actually unconstitutional. So we had to wait until the next parliament meet in order to get the new tax, and the new tax was designed in a fundamentally weird way. It would be eventually a rate of 50%, but it would be directly levied on firms on the fraction of wages above 1 million. It was announced also that it would only be for two years, 2013, 2014. It was also capped at 5% of operating profits. So it was a totally different type of new tax than the one that people envisaged to begin with, but still, the French Football League didn't find it kind of nice and decided to go on strike. So it's again, one of these moments where we have to convince people that, you know, not all greatly talented French players are gonna leave to the Premier League or to Spain. Eventually, the strike ends, but this is already enough in some sense. The public opinion is totally fed up with the idea of that tax, and in October 2014, visiting London, the Prime Minister tells David Cameron that yes, the tax will disappear in 2015. Okay? So basically, it looks like much ado about nothing, that 75% tax. When you just look at the total tax revenues that have been generated so far, it's ridiculously meager. So this is a guesstimate that it's gonna, for the years 2013 and 2014, levy roughly 400 million euros. Bear in mind that if it had been levied on a broad tax base above 1 million, at least the pure mechanical revenue effect should be above 1.2 billion, okay? So this is very meager. On top of that, it was a very focused, narrowly-focused tax in the sense that we already know that 10% of all the proceeds of all the revenues of that tax are gonna be paid by one employer only, Paris Saint-Germain, the French football club. So it tells a lot about, you know, the way the whole system had been set up. It's less than 1,000 employees that are being targeted and so on and so forth. So much ado about nothing. Can we still learn anything about top income taxation? Can we learn any interesting lessons from that fiasco? Well, I'm gonna argue along very simple lines that yes, again, we are reminded that the tax base is fundamental when it comes to taxing top income. I'm gonna also talk a lot about migration responses, again, along the lines of what Henriques just told you, but the reason is that the migration issue really loomed large in the debate. And if I have a little bit of time, I'll talk a little bit also about the political economy of top income taxation, especially in France, okay? But before I do that, and especially to understand the role of the tax base in the fiasco of that 75% tax rate, I need to remind you about a few things on the French context and the French tax system. The French income tax system is really antiquated. It's a dual income tax system now in the sense that we have two taxes on income, one that is called the IRTP, un peu sur revenu des personnes physiques. Originally, that's the first income tax that we had, it was created in 1914. It has a progressive schedule with a top marginal tax rate at roughly 49%, but it's extremely complicated. It has a very complex family tax splitting in it. There is absolutely no tax withholding that is being done, so you still have to report your income in your T+1, your income of your T, in your T+1, fill a tax form, then wait for the tax administration to come back with an estimate of your tax liability and then pay the tax liability. So it's a pretty complicated process. On top of that, it has now a very narrow tax base, and especially at the top. And interestingly, that tax base really shrunk since the 1980s. And what's the reason? Well, there are many reasons, but one key thing is that there was a big increase in the number of ITMS deductions and tax expenditure that have been voted since the 1980s. So now, in the income tax base of that IRTP, you have more than 200 potential deductions that you can use. So basically, it means that the total tax expenditure, but again, it's a guesstimate because the tax administration doesn't even know itself very much how to put a price tag on this tax expenditure, but basically, we have a sense that roughly 37 billion euros are spent on this tax expenditure for the IRTP, so it's more than 60% of the proceeds of that tax. So basically, the tax revenues that are created by that IRTP is extremely small, it's less than 2.5% of GDP. You're gonna see that it's very different from what you have in many other developed countries. Realizing this, basically, in 1991, the French government decided to create a new, instead of reforming the existing system, to create a new tax, which is called the contribution sociale générale, CSG. And the nice thing is that it has a very comprehensive tax base, it's a modern income tax in the sense that you have automatic withholding and so on and so forth, no deduction possible at all, and a flat rate. So it's absolutely flat with no personal allowance or deduction, as I said, flat rate of 7.5%. So when you look at the long-run evolution, you get the sense that yes, this system is kind of very weird compared to what you have in many other developed countries. When you look, for instance, at the UK or the US, basically, all these countries, and you've also seen it on Henriques' slides before, all developed countries get a fair chunk of their tax revenues from income taxes. And the way they managed to do that was to introduce, pretty early on, so for instance, in the US and in the UK, it was roughly in the 40s, big tax reform where you introduced tax withholding, you broadened the tax base. big tax reform where you introduce tax withholding, you broaden the tax base, and so on and so forth. So you see that created a huge increase in the total tax take from the income tax as a fraction of GDP in all these countries. But no such reform ever happened in France. And basically, the French tax revenues, income tax revenues, trail behind what you could see in any other developed countries. In the beginning of the 90s, on top of that, a lot, many more deductions are introduced. The tax base of that IRTP shrinks, and therefore, it becomes unsustainable. And so the government creates that new tax, the CSG. And, well, of course, that increases a lot the fraction of GDP that is levied through income taxation. But again, in a very weird way, in the sense that the real progressive part of the income tax remains on a very narrow base and doesn't levy much income. It's just that you have something that is essentially a VAT, a new VAT, but directly levied on income, that raises a lot the tax revenues, okay? What I mean is that it has very important effects on the tax base, and especially at the top of the income distribution, and therefore, huge implications about how you can basically raise progressivity in such a system. So when you look, for instance, at the fraction of capital income that is included in the income tax base, as I said, you have that CSG. So asset de la CSG, that first line, gray line, tells you how much of potential capital income, so this is also including impeded rent and so on, is included in the tax base of the CSG. It's roughly 50%, which is a good, you know, a good number, given that, you know, you're having impeded rents and so on and so forth. So it's pretty much what you would find in other developed countries. But when you look at the bottom line, which is the fraction of capital income that is included in that IRTP, in the tax base of the IRTP, you see that it's very, very, very small, okay? So when you look at basically the fraction of total gross income that is included in the income tax base by gross income groups, so basically, bear in mind that, so the x-axis are income groups, so income deciles, and then within the top deciles, it's being split in finer income groups, okay? But what is very, very striking is that asset du barat, so the tax base of the IRTP, declines extremely strongly at the very top of the income distribution. So basically, what it means is that the tax base at the very top of the income distribution is totally ineffective. You can change the top income tax rate here as much as you want. It's going to have very, very little effect on tax revenues. But on top of that, because that tax base is so tiny, there are many opportunities for avoidance, okay? So this is really something that, I think, tells the full story about what we've seen with that 75% tax rate, is that the tax base here is much more important than the statutory rate for top income taxation. So if you think along the lines of what Enrique just said, you have that mechanical effect and that behavioral effect. For the mechanical effect, of course, when you have a tax base like this, the statutory income tax rate is meaningless, because what matters is the effective tax rate. And because the tax base is so tiny, the mechanical effect is also going to be tiny, even with a high statutory tax rate. But second, and I think it's really even more important in the French context, is that even the behavioral effect is going to be affected by that tiny tax base. Why is that? Well, because in general, we tend to neglect how indulgent all these elasticity of taxable income, all these elasticities in general, all these tax elasticities are indulgent to the definition of the tax base. In general, we do our little Lafer rate exercises, assuming that the ETI is locally stable and that the ETI is not that much affected by other policy instruments, such as the definition of the tax rate, sorry, the definition of the tax base, the information that you give to taxpayers, the level of enforcement, and so on and so forth, okay? Or you assume that at least all these instruments, if they affect the elasticity, have already been set up immediately, okay? So a little bit like Enrique said with respect to Denmark, we have a sense that, you know, if these elasticities are so small in Denmark, it has to be because the tax base is very broad. But until very recently, we didn't have good evidence of this, okay? We have very limited empirical evidence of the direct effect of these tax instruments, such as the definition of the tax base on tax elasticity, because it's just complicated to have this type of evidence. First, you need some nice exogenous variation in the tax rates to begin with, to estimate the tax elasticity. And on top of that, you would need some variation in the tax base to be able to properly identify this elasticity before and after a tax change. What we've done in a recent paper with Gabriel Fag is actually provide direct evidence of this type of relationship between tax elasticities and the tax base. And we used, in a French context, a tax enforcement reform that was introduced a long time ago in 1983, where you increased a lot the trustability of charitable deduction, and therefore, had a huge effect on the definition of the tax base, because at the time, this was one of the major tax deductions that you had in France, okay? And from this, basically, we identified the effect of that change in the trustability of charitable deductions on tax reporting behavior, but also on the elasticity of charitable deductions, so reported contribution, and also on the elasticity of taxable income. And we showed that reported contribution dropped by more than 75%. This is what you see in that chart here. So how does it work? This is the total reported charitable contributions in the tax forms. So before 1983, you had a very loose tax enforcement of that charitable deduction. So you needed to kind of have a proof that you had made a deduction, and that proof was also sent directly by the charities to the tax administration, but you just had to keep it for yourself at home in case of an audit. After 1983, they asked you to actually attach that receipt to your tax form, and you see like a massive decline in reported contribution. Interestingly, it really affected the elasticity of taxable income as well. So here, what we show is the bunching at the king points of the income tax schedule. So again, this bunching can identify the elasticity of taxable income. You see here a significant excess mass. This is before the reform. And interestingly as well, you see that the probability of being a buncher is significantly correlated with reporting these contributions, okay? Now, you get rid of this, you enlarge the tax base, you make it less easy to evade or avoid taxes by reporting fake contribution, then this elasticity totally disappeared when you estimate it by bunching like this. So I think this is very direct evidence that, yes, all these tax elasticities that we kind of take for granted are essentially constructs of other policy instruments as well. They are totally indulgent, and that's important to keep in mind. So in the five last minutes that I have, I also want to talk a little bit about migration, because I think it really loomed large in the French context, not just because of Gérard de Puyer, but also because Cameron, Atlas Cabos, just said, "Well, I'm welcoming on a red carpet all the French citizens who want to come to France." So there was a sense that, yes, there would be a massive exodus. It was like kind of obvious to many commentators. Again, the difficulty for us economists to comment on that is that we didn't have much evidence until very recently. And the difficulty is, again, that you need good data on migration, which we often like, and also nice identifying variation to really identify the effect of tax rates on migration. So Enrique talked a bit about the paper that we did in Denmark. I also want to talk about another paper that we did, even though it's a particular segment of the labor force that we looked at. It's essentially the European football market, so top football players. It has the advantage of providing variation across all countries within the EU, and it makes us, you know, more able to estimate the elasticity both for domestic players and foreign players, okay? So how does it work? I'm just going to show you basically one table. So the idea is that we have a lot of variation, okay, in the European football context, because a lot of countries instated particular tax schemes directed at football players. What this brings us is variation within country over time. And within country, we can compare two players that would otherwise be pretty much the same, but one becomes eligible to the special tax scheme and the other not, because of the special requirements in these special tax schemes. So we put all the variation together of all these tax schemes. We also provide kind of more reduced form evidence in the paper. And then we estimate a random UTT model, where we explain the probability to play in a given country by the utility that you would get in any of these countries. And this utility depends on your net of tax wage in the country, okay? Interestingly, because of this variation, we can at the same time control for a country fixed effects, which you want to do, because it's an easy confounder. You want to locate in France or in Great Britain or in Spain, not just because of the tax rate, also because these countries are different. But on top of that, this country fixed effect might change over time, and you want to control for that. Maybe France becomes just a better place now that François Hollande is elected or not, or all these type of stuff. And on top of that, you can have that these country fixed effects over time not change in the same way for good players or bad players. Nicely enough, we can control for all of this, and then we get, you know, an estimate that, no, no, to our surprise, was very precisely estimated and relatively large when you look at the effect of log 1 minus atr, which is the average tax rate, okay? But then, when we translated this into elasticities, I think the interesting takeaway from this is that, yes, and it is kind of totally consistent with what we find in this other paper in Denmark, when you look at the elasticity for foreigners, it's pretty large. But when you look at the elasticity for domestic players, it's relatively small, okay? So it's totally in line with what we had in mind, which is that there is a lot of people that are foreigners that are kind of, you know, indifferent between choosing one country over the other once they've decided to move, okay? And this tax rate, and this tax base, sorry, is extremely mobile, and is going to be very responsive to changes in the tax rate across two countries. But when it comes to your domestic players, well, you know, they like to be in France, talk the language, be close to family, and so on and so forth. And therefore, their elasticity is much, much smaller. So the takeaway is really that, you know, yes, if you look fine enough, you'll always find somebody who is at the margin and who's going to respond to changes in the tax rate across different countries. But the elasticity, even though it's large for foreigners, it's very small for domestic, and that has important implications. So just to conclude, I think it's important to understand that there are a lot of misperceptions in the way we interpret this Lafer rate type of calculation. We kind of, I think, overinterpret the magnitude and the significance of the elasticity of taxable income. First, because a lot of these elasticities are totally indulgent, and behind these elasticities, the real responses in general are kind of small. So in general, you know, even though a lot of people would like to see increase in statutory tax rate, in some sense, if you want more redistribution, the first thing that you want to do is comprehensive reform of the tax base to really shut down all these tax avoidance and evasion mechanisms. And I think this was the big mistake of François Hollande, not to start with a big reform of the tax system before introducing any progressivity to the income tax system.
Thank you very much. So the final speaker is Alain Manin.
Well, thank you. I'll just quickly get this. Okay, so I'm going to talk about something that you might well think is just a sort of a real blast from the past. Because although the top rate of tax is a sort of a very live issue in quite a lot of places, essentially because of the rise in inequality and also the deterioration in public finances post-crisis, which means governments are looking for ways of raising more revenue. Focusing on the labor supply response of the top 1%, which is the higher earners, which is what I'm going to talk about, may seem very odd, because the modern literature on estimating responses to changes in tax rates, particularly at the top, focuses on this elasticity of taxable income concept. And starting with Feldstein's work, he said it doesn't really matter why there is an elasticity of taxable income, why taxable income responds to changes in tax rates. It doesn't matter whether that's a labor supply response, very broadly defined, hours, effort, retirement, migration, or whether it's an avoidance evasion response, again, broadly defined, coming in very many different forms. It doesn't really matter which of those. And so there's no point in looking at the labor supply aspect versus the avoidance aspect, because the overall elasticity is a sufficient statistic. So what I'm going to focus here on the labor supply response, in that way, it seems very, very old-fashioned. But I think we do need to know about the source of the elasticity of taxable income, that response. And that's for a number of reasons which have already actually been mentioned. First of all, if we think the elasticity of taxable income represents a labor supply response, given that we think that people are going to continue to have control over how much they work, that's not going to be taken away from anyone. It's something exogenous, it's something that we can't do anything about. Whereas if it comes from avoidance aspects, those are things that the previous speakers have emphasized. Those are features of the tax system. How big are the opportunities for avoidance and so on, which are things we might be able to do something about. So that's one reason why it's important. Secondly, it's still, even though the academic literature doesn't talk about the labor supply response very much, if you go outside academia, even to, say, the reports produced by the HMRC, they continue, or the OBR indeed, they continue to list labor supply response actually as the first channel of response that people have to higher tax rates, and avoidance typically second. And so it's still out there as something that people talk about. And that spills over sort of even outside those sort of technocratic reports once one gets to the sort of political battle for hearts and minds on issues relating to the top rate of tax. You typically find if you read something produced by someone who's opposing higher rates of tax, particularly at the top end, they tend to sort of big up the labor supply response, emphasizing this is going to depress enterprise and so on and so forth. Whereas if you go to people on the other end, who are tending to be more sympathetic or supporting higher tax rates at the top, they tend to big up the avoidance response. So we know that what resonates with people outside, with the public, depends a lot on whether you think what's happening is that when tax rates go up on the very wealthy, they're working less. That makes people more sympathetic. Whereas if you say it's all avoidance, that makes people not so sympathetic. So that's another reason why it's important. Now, we have very clear evidence that avoid, I mean, the previous speakers have gone on to this, I won't dwell on this, very clear evidence that avoidance can be extremely large-scale on this. So when we talked about what James talked about earlier, the HMRC evidence that when the 50p rate was announced, that the HMRC estimate is that 16 to 18 billion pounds' worth of income of approximately the top 1% was brought forward from one tax year to another on a total tax, reported taxable income of about 100 billion. So the top 1% had the ability to suddenly move income, 20% of their income, almost 20%, from one year to another. And if you go to your employer and you suggest that they do that to you, you'd probably find that quite hard, that they give you 20% more income this year and you'll take 20% less the next year. So this isn't something that's open to everyone. So we know avoidance is kind of very large-scale, but, you know, what about labor supply? And I'm going to look, quickly run through what we, I think we can say about hours. So the intensive margin, the extensive margin, participation. And also, I'm going to talk a little bit about effort. Now, you might again say, "Well, surely, we know the answer to this." This is a quote from that survey that I think was mentioned earlier, in which they basically say, "There's no compelling evidence today to real responses of upper-income taxpayers to changes in tax rates. There's no labor supply response, everything is avoidance." And so you might think, "Well, we sort of know what I'm going to say is broadly consistent with that." But that's not really, again, once one gets out, even in quite technical documents, that's not what it says. So James referred earlier to the HMRC document, evaluation of the 50p tax rate in the UK. And this is what they say. They say, "Most evidence for high earners suggests the substitution effect may outweigh the income effect, i.e. the overall effect of a tax rate increase on labor supply is negative." And so again, that's sort of very prominent in that kind of case. So I think it is actually is worth actually looking at that. And really, I'm going to argue that this, that argument is really extremely implausible when you look at the data. So I'm going to look at data from ASH, Labor Force Survey and Words. I should say to start off with, this is just about employees. At the top 1%, we've got a lot of self-employed, a lot of sort of directors, and so on and so forth. And we don't currently have a dataset in which we could do something like look at the hours of work of the top 1% of the self-employed. We don't have a big enough dataset available to us to do that. And it's not about, it's about employment income. And investment income is much more responsive to taxes, the evidence suggests. But of course, investment income, there is no labor supply response on investment income. So, you know, again, we need to bear that in mind. Okay, so a simple kind of model obviously suggests that, I'm not going to go into the details here. You can write labor supply as a function of sort of the post-tax marginal hourly wage. So the wage W times 1 minus the marginal tax rate, and the post-tax average hourly wage, which sort of captures the income effect. Now, most of the literature, including what's been talked about today, just uses changes in tax rates to think about changes in the incentives to work. But actually, there's much more variation, both in the cross-section But actually, there's much more variation both in the cross-section and overtime in wages. And so our models don't really say it's tax rates per se that affect incentives to work. They say it's the post-tax hourly marginal hourly wage that's important. And that's going to be, give us a lot, quite a lot of mileage in thinking about the plausibility of some arguments. So this is what you see in the cross-section, this is for 2013 in ASH. So as we go across the earnings distribution, we're putting average weekly hours up here. So I'm going to, I'm showing you the whole distribution, but I'm going to focus on the right-hand side of that. Now, what you can see here is, this is not intended as a causal relationship, there's a mechanical relationship that as you work more hours, you will earn more money, you will move up the percentiles of the earnings distribution. But once you get past the median, none of the changes in income that we see past the median are caused by changes in hours of work. They all come from changes in hourly wages. And what this means, if you think about what is the effect of increasing the tax rate on the top 1% of, that reduces their marginal post-tax hourly wage. It reduces it perhaps to what the 98th percentile is, perhaps the 97th percentile currently is. So it's very hard to argue, well, actually their hours of work are going to be any different when you look at this picture, from what the 98th or the 97th percentile currently, currently, and that is exactly the same, actually slightly more on these figures than the top 1%. So it's very hard to argue, looking at the cross-section, there's any relationship at all between hours of work of the top 1% and the tax rates, the margin that are being levied on them. And you can do the same, looking at changes over time, this, I'm just doing the top 1% and the median, and we're showing the post-tax hourly earnings. You can see here, that's the red line for the top 1%. You can see the big change jumps up in the mid-80s when their tax rates were increased, were reduced, and the jump down when they were increased in 2010. But again, the important point here is they've also had, because of the rise in inequality, we know there have been huge increases in the incentives to work measured by the post-tax hourly wage for the top 1% over this period, that have come not from changes in the tax system, but just changes in underlying inequality. And actually, what we see is that there's been really no change in their hours of work over this period of the top 1%, even as their incentives to work have increased enormously. And actually, their hours of work have fallen relative to the median, even as their post-tax hourly wage has risen relative to the median because of rises in wage inequality. So again, when you look at that evidence, virtually impossible to create the argument that there's any labour supply response on hours. Now, the Labour Force survey looks a little different. ASH is employer-reported information on hours, and Labour Force survey is what the individuals themselves think. And there you do see a difference. So you do see that the people right at the top of the earnings distribution do report working more hours than previously. Part of that is due to unpaid overtime that is not included in ASH but is reported in the Labour Force survey. And so there's more unpaid overtime at the top. But it's not all that. And so that means you might suggest that there's a sort of a modest labour supply effect as you reduced the post-tax hourly wage of the top 1% to say that of the top 2%. But again, that doesn't really stand up if you look at the time series, because that pattern that you see in the cross-section now has always been the case. So this again is, I'm distinguishing between total hours here, including unpaid overtime and just paid hours, and showing for the median, the top 1%. There's been no change in these things over the past 20 years, even as the top 1% have seen massive increases in their incentives to work relative to the median worker. So again, it just doesn't really seem to get off the ground as a plausible argument that there is a sizable hours response. Now, I've got sort of econometric estimates sort of behind all of this and that sort of, but you know, you can't, this sort of summarizes it all. Now, what about the extensive margin? Now, a simple way of looking at this is just ASH is a panel to look at the probability if we observe you this year, whether you're in the sample next year. If you're not in the sample, it might be you're not working, it might be that you've migrated and so on and so forth. So we can just see whether the probability of being in the sample next year is related to your current level of earnings. And again, once you get up in the highest percentiles, you see that this is completely flat. There's no evidence at all that those people right at the top, as their marginal tax rates go up, become less likely to appear in the sample next year. That's in the cross-section, you can do the same in the overtime. This is comparing the top 1% and the median, it's got a cycle because it follows the business cycle. But again, there's no difference between the top 1% and the median essentially over the last 40 years. And again, the incentives to work for these two groups have varied enormously over this period. So again, it's just the no plausible extensive response. Now, what about effort? Now, effort is often used here because, I mean, Felstein said, he sort of knew there's no evidence there's any hours response either on the intensive or extensive margin. So he moved the debate on to effort, because effort is hard to measure. So it's commonly asserted in this literature that higher-income individuals have more discretion about how hard they work and that their variation in effort is more important. But that's never really goes beyond, much beyond assertion. So it's very hard to write down a model of preferences in which that's the case. So it's hard to get a strong hours response because we know there's a limited number of hours in the day. It's hard really to write down a model with a strong effort response because we've got limited amounts of energy. There's a, you know, there's an absolute physical limit to how much effort. I would love to, someone, I came with my bike helmet, someone asked me, did I cycle from London this morning? But I put the bike on the train, actually. But I would love to have had the energy to be able to cycle, make my pedals go fast enough to be able to get from London, cycle from London to Manchester in the two hours it spent on the train, but I can't do it. But I couldn't do it, you know, I just can't physically do it. I'd win the Tour de France if I could do that. So there's natural physical limits again to effort as there are to hours. And again, that makes it very hard to write down a plausible model in which you're going to get, as the hourly wage spreads out hugely, as it does right at the top of the distribution, virtually impossible to get, write down a model in which you're going to get a sizable effort response. And then, so theoretically, it's not actually particularly plausible. And certainly when we come to evidence, well, evidence here is obviously hard because we don't really know that much about, measuring effort is hard. So I'm going to show you a little bit of evidence, but it's sort of health warning about, associated with this because, you know, effort is hard to measure. So this is data that comes from WORs. We've asked a number of questions of people. And so one of the things, elements of Felstein's argument is that higher paid have more discretion over the pace at which they work. And so one of the questions asked, do you have a lot, how much influence do you have over the pace of your work? And a higher number here, so again, here we've got the percentile and we've got the, and then we've got an index of how much control that you think you have. And WORs asks this question in three years, 1998, 2004, 2011. So it's sort of limited data. So we do indeed see that it's the first part of the Felstein argument, sort of, it's sort of true, people at the higher earners do have more discretion over the pace, control over the pace at which they work. So they could potentially vary their effort, but the question is really whether they do. And this is the second kind of picture, is that this is the fraction, they're also asked whether, how much you agree or disagree with the statement that your job requires that you work very hard. And again, you see, this is, and again, on the vertical axis here, we have an index of this is the fraction of people saying they strongly agree with that. And you do see that the highest earners report a higher level of strongly agreeing, 40% of the highest earners report that they agree that they have to work very hard. So you could say, well, that is supportive of, there is an effort response at the top. But you also notice when you look at this, that in particular, if you compare the years 1998 and 2004, that the relationship across the percentiles of the earnings distribution is exactly the same in those two years, really uncannily the same. But we know there were changes in incentives to work, differential changes in incentives to work over this period, what I showed you earlier, that actually the post-tax hourly wage of the people at the top is going up quite a lot faster in this period than the people at the median. And so again, it might be that, you know, this again, if you did a difference in, do a difference in difference, estimate of what the labour effort supply response is to that, you essentially get a zero. An interesting feature of the data, actually, in 2011, all groups, but not the very highest earners, actually report having to work harder. I thought that sort of post-crisis was quite interesting. I'll ask John later about what that says about productivity, all this extra work does for the productivity numbers, not very much, it looks like, looks like that. But I think that's a topic for another day, really, but I would mention that. So again, you know, it's hard really to make a plausible case that there's really any sizable effort response. But you have to acknowledge that this is hard to measure and this is much more limited data than we have on things like hours of work or labour force participation. So in terms of conclusions, I think if one talks about raising the top rate of income tax, you do have to worry about the decline in reportable, reported taxable income, that it may not raise very much revenue, it could conceivably even reduce it. But the reason that you have to worry about that is not really because of labour supply responses, it's because of avoidance responses. And I think that's sort of in line with what the other speakers have sort of said. And that means that we need to perhaps change a bit the way we think about it, just as Camille said, well, in France, they needed to think more about the avoidance responses and the tax base and so on. I think in the UK, we probably also have to do, to do that as well, because I think if you were to want to raise the top rate of tax, you also, that policy is going to be, has to be complementary to one in which you're also thinking about what are the main avoidance mechanisms and what you could do to limit the use of those. So I'll just stop there.
All three can come on the clock, please.
I'll stand over here. You can sit on the important chest.
Please, please take your seats. Okay, so we've got five or 10 minutes for some questions. What I suggest is there's roving mics around. Why don't we gather up a couple of questions? If you have, if you want to address people, go ahead. I'll collect a few and then hand it over to the panel. So any questions? Gentlemen there. Black teacher.
So one of the questions is for Hendrik, which is, you didn't talk so much about the, why Denmark manages to get away with this on the participation margin? And also, if you might talk a little bit about how this all relates to Michael Keen's talk on Monday about the human capital margin, because that should be kicking in as well. And you're saying, well, the economic outcomes are all good as well, so it's not just unemployment and participation, but it's also high productivity of workers. And if there's, there is a second question.
Okay, I think given time, we might have to.
It's a short one.
There's a question here from Steve Machin.
Thanks. I just wanted to ask someone about the 50p, 45p rate stuff, because you didn't mention anything about bonuses, and I thought bonuses were, shifting the bonuses across the years was an issue in that. And then the IFS talks, sort of mentioned employment income from a survey of personal incomes didn't show a massive amount, so the bonuses stuff, I was kind of interested in.
Yeah, we didn't, yeah, we don't see very much on employment income from year to year. I mean, I think you need to be a little bit careful with that, using the tax return data, and you have more people having to fill in tax returns after the reform, which might bias that a little bit. But I mean, I think you might have got more of that at the point when the tax rate came down and it was pre-announced and people were delaying, was having their bonuses paid.
Bonus tax, well, the, you know, bonus tax like for the 50p tax, so that kind of offset incentives, you bring it forward to avoid the 50p tax, but delay it for the bonus tax. So.
But there is a bit, I looked in the LFS actually, because they were, you were asked whether you received a bonus last month. And there does seem to be a little bit more concentration of people being paid bonuses in the sort of January, February, March, just before the 50p comes in compared to normal. But it's not huge, you know, not huge numbers and it's quite noisy, so it's a bit, that sort of, there were reports of that in the papers at the time, and I think it's a little bit.
Yeah, I think it gets a bit of a catch as well, that when you've been back to pay wages, when you've been in the long term, it's a bit of a.
Hendrik, do you want to take the question first?
Yeah. Yeah, so why is labour force participation high in Denmark despite these huge participation tax rates? I think that's a fascinating question that we need to do more research on. There are, I'm working a bit on it now. I mean, there's two hypotheses that one could think about. One thing that's often mentioned has to do with social norms, gender norms in particular, because a lot of this, the variation across countries is about female labour force participation. I think that's definitely one very interesting route to explore where we still don't know very much. Another route which I think we can, which is a little bit easier to address, that I've thought a little bit about, is to think about how tax revenue is spent. So the participation tax rates in Scandinavia, I think overstates the distortion of labour force participation, because a lot of the revenue that's collected that creates these high tax rates is spent on expenditure items that effectively subsidize labour force participation, free childcare for everybody, elderly care, great public transportation, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that is potentially something that could be hugely important that I'm currently thinking about. Your second question was on Michael Keen and human capital. So first of all, I just arrived today, so I didn't see Michael Keen's talk on Monday, but, but, you know, I know sort of, I guess, a bit about that general, about his work and that general point. So yeah, effects on human capital, sort of long-run labour supply and human capital, I guess is what your question is about. Again, I mean, just in the aggregate, Scandinavian countries are doing very well, they're high human capital countries, people work, have high labour force participation, hours worked are lower, but not, they're not that much lower, and labour productivity is somewhat lower, but not that much. So sort of in the aggregate, things are looking pretty good. But yeah, I still think there is an important research area there in terms of thinking about how to sort of estimate long-run labour supply effects, taking into account human capital effects, both formal education, but also learning by doing and how labour supply today affects sort of earnings in the future through career effects and so on.
So I would use the term privilege. So you, there seems to be consensus on the panel that avoidance is the key thing here, and you're all saying, well, a way to deal with that is by certification and broadening the tax base and do so. Everybody in the room probably agrees with that. But the other way, since legal avoidance easily switches imperceptibly into illegal evasion, is to invest more in HMRC's enforcement of the tax codes or taxes. Now, what, you know, I'm interested, I'm going to start with Camille and then maybe other people. If we spent more on enforcement, would that be a good investment in how we should allocate public funds, the evidence in that?
Well, I'm happy to answer. It's also extremely related to the work that Hendrik has been conducting. I think what we know about tax enforcement is that, you know, auditing is extremely costly. Shutting down a tax avoidance mechanism by just increasing a tiny bit the level of information, third-party reported information and so on and so forth, is much more effective. So it seems to me that, you know, simplifying the tax code is a much simpler way at increasing revenues than, you know, spending on audit, which is a much more costly technology to get at the same thing.
Well, say, say we couldn't, say I rule out certification, would your advice to the next chance of its checker would be not to do anything or to actually increase the amounts of money that we spend on, I mean, you know, if you were Becker, you could just say, well, we could always get better enforcement by just increasing the penalties for evasion.
Well, I think, for sure, we need to have a debate on what it means. Well, I think, anyway, for, for sure, we need to have a debate on what it means to have an oversimplified tax base or a complicated tax base. It's true that if we want redistribution, one of the nice things about being a developed country and having, you know, an effective tax administration is that you can target redistribution by having a tax code that allows for nice and well-targeted subsidies on redistribution. So of course you want that. The question is, you know, there's going to be a trade-off at some point between the, the amount of targeted redistribution that you can get and these elasticities that are going to, you know, rise as you.
So I have a bit of an answer to that, and also kind of a question that goes back to everyone else on the panel as well. So, you know, I think there is some evidence that actually, you know, auditing, particularly of the self-employed, you know, can pay dividends, there's, you know, some evidence that there's a lot of income reporting with the income where they're self-employed. But around in Tarr and Exeter, I've been doing studies, looking at how does future income declarations change in response to auditing? And they find quite substantial increases in future, future reporting. I'm not sure if you can kind of cost benefit and ask that, but it suggests that there could be some, some role there for, and the amount of auditing that HMRC does has massively reduced in the last 10, 15 years. In 2000, you know, about 5% audits, now around less than 1% audits, so it's been a big change in, in audit capabilities. Question I had is, you know, kind of to Ed, what is that? The UK, as far as I'm aware, actually has a relatively broad income tax base compared to many countries. You know, we haven't got deductions, some more interest, we have expensive kind of kids in there. Where, where is, where is the scope for, for boarding in the UK? There's the Merlin style thing about, sorry. I know we have a pretty loud voice, so people can usually hear me. IFS people laugh. So yeah, where, where's the scope for boarding in the UK? Is it the kind of Merlin style idea about removing the, the differences in rates between different kinds of forms of income? So for instance, in our work, we see that there's a lot of response on dividends, which suggests it could be being held in companies. Is part of the avoidance then, it being held in companies for a long time and taken as capital gains because of the low income tax on capital gains in the UK? So where's the avoidance in the UK?
So we're, we're kind of over time, so short answers to end it from whoever wants to make their own.
Well, could I just say that I, I think that's a very good, but I don't know the answer to that. When I was doing this, I realised I didn't quite understand it. It was very interesting to see what you showed on deductions, which I haven't seen, seen before. But I think there's just, we need to know, it's, it's very unclear, very, very hard to find out exactly what is being done by tax planners for high-income individuals actually. And I think that's something that I felt I personally kind of needed to know exactly what was being used, whether this leaves any trace on tax returns at all. I think it's a lot around what you say, the self-employed, directors of closed companies. You know, they're lending money to themselves in some cases, and, you know, doing all sorts of strange things, just looking at that much more closely.
So one response to, to your question, John, but I think it also relates to, to your, to your question, question, David. So I think, I think the reason why probably none of us really focus so much on evasion is that, to a large degree, that's not where most of the variation is across countries anymore. That is, I think most modern tax systems do, you know, to a large extent, the best job they can with evasion. And sort of most of the action that's left is about avoidance and, and tax bases shifting and so on. But I think the one place, the, the one really big thing has to do with international information sharing and moving income offshore. I think that's really the big, if you think about the top 1% of the very wealthy taxpayers, the one place where enforcement is still not good is in terms of international tax evasion. I think that also relates to avoidance, because in the UK, this is something that surprised me when I moved to the UK. The, the UK has, has completely legal ways in which you're allowed as a non-dom taxpayer to move your income abroad. And, you know, any sort of app, you know, a guy like me can do it for seven years legally, a wealthier guy can, than me, after seven years can pay, I think, a £50,000 fee or something like that to do it indefinitely. So that's an example of an international avoidance strategy, which is built into the legal tax code that one might consider. It's just, just one of these kinds of.
Okay, so thanks very much. I think we should just thank all the panel for a really great session and sorry to take your leave.